Hello and good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 26, 2019, meeting of the Wakefield School Committee. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask all to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation under guard due to the liberty and justice for all.
Also, as we do, begin with the reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next on the agenda is our comment period. Welcome any member of the public who would like to express a thought to the school committee. Please feel free to come up and do so. Okay, seeing none, we shall move along. Item number five, Student Advisory Council. Hey guys, you're welcome. Thanks for being here. That's how it should be done. Good. What do you have to share with us for tonight?
Okay. Next week in Wednesday, there's a half-day. The senior classes are preparing for a variety of senior events, including the senior show, Senior Night, and Senior Prom. And then at the prom, the students will have another after-party event at Dave and Buster's like there was last year. And then they'll also be participating in the Credit for Life event, which will teach them kind of professional and life skills. The week before vacation was Teen Dating Violence Prevention Week sponsored by the Mentors of Violence Prevention Group. A speaker named Michael Masley spoke to the freshman and sophomore classes and kind of educated them about the importance of healthy relationships. And this week is See Something, Say Something Week, and giving presentations to gym classes to talk about the issue.
And so tomorrow, the Theater Department is going to be performing Twenty-Six Pebbles, a play, and the name is a reference to the Twenty-Six Steps of Sandy Hook. And this morning, they started hanging signs around the hallway with statistics about school shootings and other facts. Right now, as you may have been able to tell because of the parking, there is a playoff game happening between the Metting and Wakefield. And on February 23rd, the wrestling teams first, the wrestling team sent the first girl from Wakefield to become an All-State Champ, so that's pretty good.
That's wonderful.
And her name is Anna Baldavina. She's a freshman.
Wonderful. Any thoughts or comments for our committee?
No, I wish.
We don't have anyone in there that could set us the scores again? We'll have to send a text to someone.
I'm looking forward to nothing, but it was very early.
Oops.
Wakefield's up, I want to ask. According to our coaches.
Are you the athlete? Thank you. Great.
Oh, I just got a question. The See Something, Say Something program, is that part of the Dating Violence Prevention Program or is that different?
Um, that's part of the, um, I think it refers to gun violence events.
Say it again, sorry.
I think it refers to like, to being aware of like, potential, like, possible gun violence.
I see, okay, gun violence, thank you.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on the Twenty-Six Pebbles? Like, how is this played? Pebbles, okay, okay. How is it being acted out? Is it in the theater or is it throughout the school? How is it?
I think it's at the Saving Thing Theater.
It's going to be in the theater? Is it almost like a regular kind of play?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Will it also be performed on Saturday at Wayland High School for the theater competition?
I'm actually not sure.
I think so, Wayland, 4:30 Saturday for the state competition, which would be great, yeah.
So that's our play for the Mass High School.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Correct.
And Thursday night in the Saving Thing Theater here.
Oh, Will, Will. He's not. Thank you.
And the students are seeing it tomorrow? And, no? No, he's off. Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
When is this senior play? Which weekend is that?
Uh, I think it's the week, the second-to-last week of March. Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Well, thank you so, so very much. You're welcome and encouraged to stay and participate as you like.
I think they're going to the game.
You know, I want to make sure that that's, that's, that's not a bad idea, thanks. Please do. Okay, moving right along, consent agenda. We have a motion, Mr. Callanan.
Well, the school committee approved the minutes of the February 13, 2019, school committee meeting as presented. Second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes around this way. Okay. Chairs, comments, and action items. My intention was to bring forward some important updates and dates. My suggestion right now is that we move forward and I can send things around that Doug and I have been talking about dates that have been coming together, just want to make sure that we all have. But I would like to say out loud, because it's this week, that the Wakefield Education Foundation's Their Adult Spelling Dean is Friday night. And I want to make sure that we, I promote that and encourage the community to support the lefters as best as we all can. And any member of the school committee or school committee wanted to form a table or a team, we should consider doing that. But anyways, this coming Friday, Friday, March 1, at the Wakefield Elks, is the Left's Annual Adult Spelling Dean. Okay. Item number eight, moving on, Superintendent's Report, remarks and reports. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. First, I'd like to welcome back families and students as on February break. It's good to have the break, but it's also good to get back at it and continue the year and the calendar. Tomorrow marks, after tomorrow, after today, will have 75 days of school left. Not that we're keeping track or counting too closely, but time is going very quickly. So, just a few comments in that area. But this evening, I'm going to be presenting the FY '20 Superintendent's Recommended Budget, and so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. And so, I will talk about kind of the process that we took and the time that we took to develop this budget. But I also wanted to share with the committee and the community that when we plan our budgets annually, we kind of look through the lens of our core values, our vision, and our instructional strategy. And our mission and our vision, you may recognize it on the slides, it's the same text and same language that Tom uses to open our school committee meeting every week. And this is kind of the beginning of our one-page instructional strategy that all schools have, all teachers have, all administrators use, and this is kind of the lens that we use in planning, in all the planning that we do in the district. And so, the first part of our instructional strategy is quality teaching. And so, there's three parts to our instructional strategy. Part one is quality teaching, really, first and foremost, investing in our teachers and our educators, our faculty and our staff. And so, you know, we want to make Wakefield kind of a vibrant, exciting place to work. We want to be able to hire, keep, and develop, and retain our, the very best teachers and faculty that we can. So the first part of this quality teaching strategy is to foster continuous educator growth and job-embedded professional development, right? And so, job-embedded professional development is during the school calendar, during the school year, we have time dedicated within the, within the school day, within the calendar, for teachers to stay current in their practices, to learn with and from one another, the things that they are interested in learning and things that they need to learn to be most effective in the classroom. And our teachers really do an amazing job in this space in giving of themselves and giving their time. And so, between, when we say job-embedded PD, this includes three professional days, 10 early release days, it includes Monday faculty meetings, and it also includes professional learning community time where teachers work with one another. And so, the total number of hours, just to create a context, that teachers spend in job-embedded PD, they spend anywhere between 80 and 100 hours in the course of the school year. Now, that doesn't include any professional coursework that they do on their own. It doesn't include any summer work that would be on top of that as well. So, I make note of that because sometimes we're asked questions like, you know, how much time do teachers spend in kind of keeping current in their content area? Or how much time, what does it take to stay, to keep your certification current, a highly qualified certified certification? What does it take to kind of keep that intact? And so, so teachers really work hard at this and we are really trying to develop structures for them to do that and to have it be during the course of their working year. And so, the other part of this is that we try to create opportunities for teachers to de-privatize their practice and kind of learn and collaborate with one another, right? And so, you know, the old style of professional development where a professional might come and stand in front of a room and talk at teachers for a couple hours, that's kind of, it's a little dated, and there are some instances when that, that may be appropriate. But, you know, we find that teachers really learn very well with one another, in smaller cohorts than larger groups. And so, we've made some changes in our professional development and also in our PLCs and how we're supporting teachers to do that. And I think the teachers have done, have really made good use of their professional learning community time within the structures of the day to really meet the needs of kids. That's kind of an ongoing challenge, so it's something that they're really working on. And the third part of the quality teaching bullet, or the first part of our strategy, or the third part of this, is to build a capacity with high-leverage instructional practices. It allows instructional leadership teams and the administrative teams to select, you know, one of a few instructional practices as opposed to try to focus on so many, you know, really, and allowing, giving schools and administrative teams and teacher leaders that permission to work on things like growth mindset, or to work on things like student engagement, or to work on a topic like meeting diverse needs, or the needs of diverse learners. It allows them to, to not, you know, say that every, there's a lot that isn't, that is important, but to really dig deep and focus in that area. And so, that's kind of the first part of our strategy that we focus on in kind of building the budget. The next part of our strategy is to invest in high-quality teaching tools, invest in, you know, rigorous curriculum. And so, we have, we're very fortunate to have a curriculum review and renewal cycle that allows us annually to look at a curricula area, and this started six years ago now, when we started off straight away with English and Math, and we looked at the curriculums that we were using at our, at our, at our elementary schools, and we said, okay, what is the same, what is different? How do we prioritize? What is the most current programs that our students could benefit from? So we brought them in and we piloted those curriculums. We've learned a lot since that first year of implementation. We're now in our fifth year. We are, we're currently implementing a new FOS science curriculum. We're implementing a new world language as well as health and wellness curricula right now as well. And so, this current year, with the renewal and review cycle, we are reviewing our social studies curriculum, which is timely because there's a new state framework coming out for social studies this year. And as part of our curriculum, we always look at how to integrate digital tools, enrich and personalize, you know, student needs. A lot of the new curriculums that we're purchasing has supports to kind of challenge our most advanced learners and supports also to challenge and support learners that have different needs. There are, there are digital tools to support our English-language learners as well as students that may have reading or special education needs. So we're particularly pleased at kind of the range of our new curriculums and the ability to accommodate students with those materials. Also, it's a priority for us to get digital textbooks. You know, we want students to be able to, you know, not lug big giant book bags back and forth to school, but to be able, when possible, to jump online and look at a text and read a text and, and kind of do that right on their computer just to save, save time. They can do it, you know, they don't have to be home. They can really do it anywhere as long as they have access to a computer. So that's kind of the second part of our instructional strategy. And the third part of our instructional strategy is becoming increasingly complex and kind of critical for us and for our students, right? It's to individualize student learning and to invest in our students, right? And so, our students are working with more and more complex curriculum materials, and they're producing work that is really, I don't want to say surprising, but amazing, right? And so, you know, whenever we have parents come in for conferences, they'll always make a comment like, geez, you know, this math is amazing. I didn't realize that kids were doing math this sophisticated at such a young age. Or I didn't realize that they were writing the way that they are at such young ages. But with our ASK and with students working with more and more complex materials, we've also seen kind of different challenges with students in regard to what their needs are, right? Some students thrive in digital environments, some students need support in digital environments. Some students kind of take to text and produce text and language in different ways, and some students need support in those ways. So when we think about individualized student learning, it's really looking at kind of the whole child and, and students not only that may have learning differences, but also really trying to think thoughtfully about challenging our most advanced learners, right? And so, this is kind of looking at the range of students that we have and kind of the inclusive practices and tiered strategies and our ability to differentiate to meet their needs. So this is, this is particularly an important part of our strategy that I think you'll see highlighted in this budget, and you'll also see highlighted through several of the additions that we're looking, we're seeking to make within this budget. And so, in regard to the budget development timeline, this is just, this is not all of the dates. The list is kind of exhaustive. But this is kind of a December to April snapshot of what we've done to kind of prepare for and present this budget tonight. And so, we start in November, looking at past budgets, looking at where we think we are, where we think our priorities could be, and that's just, those are just kind of working meetings. Principals and directors in, in December this year, on the 17th and on the 19th, principals and directors at all schools at all levels were required to come and present their school budgets. As part of this process, we look at the total enrollment for their schools. We look at student needs for their schools. We look at different programs that are in different schools. And we really ask them to be thoughtful about how they are prioritizing, okay? It's not just a, you know, it's interesting, it's, it's, it's a meeting, it's an open meeting, and several school committee members have attended, and they have commented that they have appreciated that, you know, administrators in their presentations of budget needs have kind of been thoughtful around reconstituting positions or thinking thoughtfully about how they can use and be innovative to kind of meet, to be easy different kid instead of just adding on to the budget. So there's a kind of a responsibility and accountability piece that goes along with that. But principals and directors presented on the 17th and the 19th of December. January was a busy month. We did budget staff forums. We met at, with teachers at every school for what we call budget coffees. So, in the morning, the Assistant Superintendent, Cara Morrow, and I went to every school, sat and talked with teachers, and teachers shared with us what they felt like they needed, what they felt like they have appreciated, that they have been able to get in Wakefield, that they heard other districts don't have. So I think the conversations were balanced, but they were pretty clear and candid about what they thought was most important to them. So, from there, we developed working sessions with the admin team to kind of go back over the feedback that we got from teachers, again, to cut, reallocate, prioritize, and, and know that, you know, we don't have unlimited resources. We do have to be thoughtful about how we budget, but we really need to prioritize. And then we met and presented this information to FinCom, and it was also shared in our State of the Schools address. So, which moves us into February. So yesterday, in the morning, we met with Finance and Facility Subcommittee along with our FinCom liaisons, which we were very fortunate to have at our meeting, and we presented misinformation and got some feedback from them as well. And so, after tonight, our next budget hearing will be on March 12th, which will be kind of a time when we get to hear from people. And on the 25th, we'll present the town council, and on the 26th, the school committee will vote. And so, just kind of moving on and kind of taking a look at some of the type of data that we collect. And so, after our meetings at each school, what we do, what we've done is we've kind of prioritized or enlisted the kind of the items that teachers and have reported that they, this is Beaver Areas. So the column on the left are areas that were highlighted in the survey where we asked, you know, what is most important to you, right? And so, we've heard that all of these things are important, but what is most important? And so, so parents, teachers, parent educators, administrators, all could participate in this survey. We have 321 responses, which is up a little bit from last year. I think last year, there's probably around 280 or 290. So we're up probably 30 responses, which is good, but this is the data that was created. It's a little tough to see, so I reformatted the graph on the next slide, and you can see a little bit more clearly here. I put, I kind of rank ordered things so that you could in fact see what the budget priorities that were listed from stakeholders. And so, and, and in those top priorities, one of the first priorities on our survey was the technology and engineering curriculum and technology and engineering opportunities for students. And so, the other, the next kind of top priority was the need for adjustment counselors. You know, our counseling support group and our teachers, our counselors that are working in spaces at each level have really been stretched in the last couple of years. And this has been a challenge for us, but a challenge for them. But this also ties into our third strategy about individualizing the needs of students. And so, the next priority is the need for moderate special needs teachers and really thinking about special education. And the next priority after that is a reading specialist. We've heard that, you know, what's common in the top four is that they all correlate directly to student contact time, student service directly from an adult to a student. And so, the other, the other part that I, I felt like I needed to put on here that wasn't part of the survey was student contact time. Because, you know, this, this idea about needing more time and having more time within the day is something that has been discussed at the teacher level for a number of years now. So I just wanted to highlight that as one of our, our top priorities as well. So, that's the feedback and the data that we got from, those are kind of the, the top five that we got from our feedback survey. Again, we had 300-plus respondents, and we appreciate their, their feedback. And so, the other thing that's important to note is that other, other things that were highlighted on the survey, we are looking at and thinking about different ways to address those needs that are not additional asks in the budget, but trying to meet those needs within the context of the budget. We're looking at trying to, continuing to reallocate even after this presentation to try to, to meet some of those opportunities and needs as well. So the other part of our data collection happened through our Student Services Subcommittee. So we have three members of the school committee and myself that are, that make up the Student Services Subcommittee. And, you know, that group came together this year, which was, and actually, you know, this group had a big charge to really look at kind of student needs across a wide spectrum. And one of the things that I'm pleased that we were able to do is to say what we'd really like to know as a starting point, and this is just a starting point for the Subcommittee, but as a starting point, what we really like to know is students with learning, with learning needs, parents who have children on an IP on a 504 who are transitioning from grades four to five or eight to nine, or have transitioned from four to five or eight to nine. So that's present and past, right? To kind of survey them, to reach out to them directly and get feedback from them using a survey tool to say, you know, what are the few priorities as your children are transitioning? What is most critical? And kind of the four areas that they really highlighted are kind of the, their significant need for organizational skill support and executive functional coaching. And so, that's something that we need to look at and look into with special education. They also talked about the need for math support, because math is such a high-stakes course, not only in the sequence K through 12, but also to be admitted to college. There's a particular focus on math, math achievement, and growth in math. And so, and the other two areas are counseling and reading, right? And so, as I was reading this and kind of reading the results and the data from the survey from the Student Services Subcommittee, I was particularly pleased that this also aligns with and substantiates the things that were highlighted by stakeholders in our other survey. So I think that that's just an important piece to note. So, you know, one of the things that we talk about is to just make space for our priorities. You know, if everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority. You know, you have to kind of own this. You need to kind of step into this kind of discomfort and say, you know, we can't do everything, but what are, where are we going to start? What are we going to prioritize? And so, you know, principals and district administrators were required to prioritize and make decisions about the highest need for their schools. Based on those conversations, we ended up cutting 1.5 full-time equivalent positions from, from the budget and then replacing those with some other or different priorities. And I'll get into that in a minute. But we've also made cuts in regard to, in school supplies, utilities, as well as special education costs. And so, and, and what I think Michael Piffling has been particularly help, a help with and really superb in this area is really helping us, you know, utilize grants and think innovatively about how we're spending our dollars that come in with grants. and also how we're using our circuit breaker to create an offset in this budget. And so, um, so the priorities, so this is kind of a, a big slide. So the priorities for us is to continue to focus on individualized student learning, the third strat, strategy item, and really focus on the social emotional learning and behavioral health by adding three, um, FTE equivalents of adjustment counseling support, um, at, at all levels, right? And so, I should say at the elementary level and at the high school level. We're looking at, um, adding a point five behaviorist. Um, and we're also looking at adding a point five reading specialist, which is, um, so when we're adding portions, point five, point four, point five is a half of a position. But in some instances, we already have an existing point five. So that point five that's existing within the budget, by add, by adding this, it can make that position a full-time position, um, which is one of the things that we heard loud and clear. You know, one of the teachers said to us in our, in our coffee survey or our, our kind of, our budget coffees is, you know, um, at the Walton School, one of the teachers said, you know, please don't give us a fraction of anything. You know, a fraction of someone coming, you know, for an hour a day, it just, it, it, it doesn't cut it for us. And so one of the things that the first bullet and the priorities that we've made there allows for, uh, more support, more continuity there. So the second bullet on this slide, um, we're really looking to kind of support and, and value the arts as part of this budget, um, and art as part of the academic core. And so because of that, we're going to add, um, we're recommending that we add a point four FTE for art at the high school. And, and the third bullet, we're looking to support, um, special education needs of students at the middle level by adding a one point O, a moderate special needs teacher. And so, um, we're also looking at the possibility of reconstituting a position to provide more special education support at the middle level because there's particularly, um, some, some kind of difficult situations in regard to how we're providing support in a rotating schedule. But I'll have more information on that as we move forward. And so in, in our fourth bullet, we're also looking to add, and I shared this in our State of the Schools. You know, we've added in the last three, four years, we added three thousand machines to our district and we have three people in our technology department. Um, and, you know, three people for three thousand machines, just do the math. And so, um, school districts our size, um, have a technology department of, of more than three. And so we have for some time, this has been cut every year that I've been here. Um, and so this time it's, it's not, we're not cutting it. We're saying that it, it is a priority and that we need it. We need a one point O full-time technician, um, and we also need to look at technology in our digital tools as we move forward. And, and activity fees, um, will also continue to be supported to maintain the levels that we've established and we've cut them down to in our FY nineteen budget. So pleased about that as well. So the three major areas of the budget, you know, I, I think sometimes people see a big number for what it costs to run our schools and they think, you know, well, you know, does that all go to salaries? The answer is absolutely not. Um, you know, I think we wish it did, but we know, you know, it does not. And so the first, the three major areas of our budget are, the first is personnel. Eighty percent of our budget is made up of personnel costs. And so I just want to be clear in regard to when we say personnel, people think, oh, that's just teachers. It's not just teachers, right? We have seven collective bargaining units, five hundred and sixty-nine teachers that serve, teach and support three thousand five hundred and thirty-three students and families, right? And, uh, there's a lot of moving parts there. So eighty percent of our, of our budget costs go to personnel. The next part goes to, and it, they're not equal parts, obviously, right? And so the next part go to operational costs and the third part, um, are, are our special education costs and our out-of-district tuitions. And so special education is, um, kind of a difficult budget, um, a difficult thing to budget for because it's, it's rather unpredictable. You know, as a, as a district, as a public school district, we are responsible for providing support, a free and appropriate education for all of our students and we need to meet their needs. If we have someone that has emerging needs that we can't support in the district, we are responsible for placing that student in an out-of-district placement in a, in a space that can meet their needs, right? Now there's a team process that, that kind of facilitates that. It's not done by, by one group or one, not parents alone or not teachers alone, but there's a team that does that. But, um, when we have students go out of district, you know, we were asked a question at our Finance and Facility Subcommittee, you know, how much does it cost to educate a student out of district? Well, I mean, the answer to that is anywhere between, you know, forty to fifty thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars depending on their needs, right? And so, um, we really need to be attentive to that and thinking about how to support our students. And we, we get asked this question all the time and I feel like I can't address it or answer it enough in the affirmative. We always get the question, um, so do you ever think about trying to build programs in district first? And the answer is yes, always. That's the first place we start. We want to think about educating students in the community in district. It's a first priority for us. Um, and the only time that students are going out is when we can't meet their needs in district. Um, but that is a particular area of commitment, um, on our part and responsibility on our part. So, um, just a note about special education. Um, the program development to support all learners continues to be an area of focus for us. Um, again, I think that this just highlights some of the things that I just shared around what are priorities and what are kind of things that we value. You know, based on the completion of programming this year, um, based on the completion of programming and students returning to district, we are anticipating a reduction in our out-of-district placements for FY twenty. And you'll see that more when I get to our budget slide. Um, but I, I also want to be clear that we are proposing an expansion of programs options at the middle level and at other levels as well, but at the middle level to start, um, which include increased opportunities for language-based services and social communication support, uh, because we have students that need help in those areas, okay? Um, and the, the fourth kind of bullet here, the district has expanded social emotional learning opportunities district-wide in line with our asset, our social emotional learning strategy and the feedback from stakeholders from surveys represents that. And so the need for us to have more support and help in the counseling spaces, I think is, is represented in our budget. So, um, what we are proposing, um, for a personnel increase, uh, we're proposing a one point eight million dollar, you can round it off to one point nine million dollar increase of four point six seven percent over, over FY nineteen. Um, this would be an increase to stipends of fifty-seven thousand dollars at point one four percent. The new removed positions in retirements will allow us, um, for forty-one thousand dollars. And so that's point one percent. So the personnel total, the, in this budget is four point nine two percent at one point nine million dollars. That's what we are proposing. So in regard to the, the second part, operational costs. So we scrutinize operational costs, probably we go over this and over this and over this and think about, you know, how we can kind of reduce the budget. And so, you know, if personnel makes up eighty percent of the budget, operational costs are making up point four eight percent of the budget. Um, and these are the priorities that we've both increased and decreased. You'll see if, um, amounts are in parentheses, they are negative numbers. So those areas have either been reduced to zero or, um, have been reduced by the amount indicated in parentheses. But operational costs this year is point four eight percent. Uh, the third part, special education. And so, um, I, I did share the complexity of special education and the volatility of special education. And on my earlier slide, I did say that we in FY twenty, uh, due to students that, um, have, have completed their academic programming at different out-of-district placements and our ability to keep students in district has allowed us to cut special education out-of-district costs by one point one four percent. So that's, that's a big cut for us, which is a plus. Um, but we also, an offset to that is we've added personnel in FY nineteen to keep, to provide service and to keep students in district, which goes back to the point that I spoke to a moment ago, which is, do we ever think about building or providing support in district? And that's what that one, the hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars is. So that's an increase of point five percent with a decrease of one point one four percent with a decrease in special education costs of negative point six four percent. So when you look at the negative six four percent and you kind of add that to our operational, um, our prior two slides, to our, um, am I getting ahead? So yeah, when we look at our negative point six four and we look at, um, we, we look at our operational costs and our personnel costs, um, that brings us to kind of this number here. So we were at four point nine two for personnel, point four eight for operational. Special education was decreased by point six four percent, which again, I, I feel like is a testament to the good work that Lynn O'Neil has done and her team has done. I think in special education, I think that they've worked particularly hard. Um, and we're also, we've also been, uh, fortunate in that some students have completed their academic programming. So, um, that's where we are. And so the net total that we are proposing tonight is to increase the budget by one point nine million dollars, um, and which kind of decreases with the saving in special education to four point seven five percent. And so the total, uh, FY twenty recommended budget, um, for this year, the total school budget would be forty-one million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, forty-eight dollars and zero cents, as Michael likes to tell me. And so, um, so that's what we're proposing. I also, um, thought it would be prudent to just include the governor's preliminary budget forecasting around, um, chapter seventy. So it looks like in their reporting, it's going to go up by two hundred thousand dollars. Um, I, you know, we'll see how that goes. But that's what we are proposing. Um, again, our goal is to create great space for kids and to help them be, you know, ages four through eighteen, have a great experience and develop the skills they need to, to go on and do great things. You know, we want to inspire a love of learning, um, for students and for adults. Um, and I think we have an opportunity to do that and an obligation to do that. And so, and this is just a picture from day one at Dolbear Elementary. So kind of a big, big shot there. And so that is the recommended budget. I don't know, um, if after this evening, if, if people have questions, you're welcome to send me a note at that email address, but that's it.
Very good. So, um, uh, so, so tonight, uh, well, thank you Doug and certainly thank you Mike and the entire team Cara is here as well with us tonight. Uh, so certainly thank the entire team. Uh, it has been a, um, as demonstrated earlier, uh, an awful lot of work that, that begins earlier and earlier each year to get us, uh, to this point. I think I, um, also supports and thank yous to the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee members for the, um, obviously the work, the numerous hours that you put into meetings. Um, thanks to the feedback from, from Town Hall, the Finance Committee and Steve Mayo and others that have helped, um, sort of shape some of your thinking and your recommendations. Um, so members of the committee, tonight is not the time, as we know, for questioning and, and conversation to superintendent's presentation. Um, we are to take this presentation to the community at large. Members of the community should, uh, be aware that certainly our, our budget books in hard format copy are available in the superintendent's office. Feel free to, uh, come by if anyone would like one and remember the community would like one, please, please do so. Um, the electronic version will be on the website, I'm assuming. When might that be up?
Tomorrow morning, the electronic version of the FY twenty budget and the presentation from Mr. Lyons tonight will be up on our website. Part by nine AM.
Very good.
Wonder what time we get done tonight?
Yeah, that, that's, that's fair. So certainly also members of the community, please, if you'd like the electronic version, do not hesitate to go to the, the homepage of the Wakefield Public Schools website to, um, now is the opportunity, whereas not only as the seven members of the school committee, but the community at large has the opportunity to really dig in to the type of, um, recommendations that the administration is making. Um, as Doug mentioned and will be also reminded, um, in point number eleven on the agenda that our next meeting, Tuesday, March twelve, um, she, uh, will be the public hearing. Um, and at, at that time, as Doug mentioned, the members of the community, um, at any, at any stakeholder will be, will be welcomed and encouraged to speak to the committee about their thoughts, um, good, bad or indifferent with regard to, um, the priorities of the school district and priorities that we should be, we should be, I, I'll be thinking about. So, um, anyways, uh, so moving on, other agenda items, thank you Doug for that. We will, um, please stay in touch. Members of the community, I invite on behalf of everyone, reach out to members of the community, reach out to the superintendent. Uh, certainly we want nothing more than continued community conversations around what our priorities for advancing, uh, 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 teaching and learning should be. And this is the, this is the blueprint for what the superintendent and the school committee believe are our priorities for next school year. So we want to hear from, from all. Uh, thank you for that. Okay, Mr. Lyons, um, eighth C.
So before I move on to C, if I can just, I, I'd like to thank Greg for your work on Finance and Facility Subcommittee and for the Student Services Subcommittee, to, to Chris and to Amy, thank you very much. I feel like, um, those conversations have been particularly helpful at helping, um, us really have a conduit to parents to think about how our work on that committee can really be, um, shown in, in this, in our budget. And so, and to be honest, I also need to especially thank Michael Piffling. Um, cause you know, the, the budget book is really a kind of an artifact of his work. Um, and I think it's a document that we're particularly proud of. I've had some new superintendents ask me if they could, um, quote, borrow it, um, because they feel like it's a great tool to use, um, to be transparent with the community, but also to highlight and prioritize and align with the instructional strategy and the strategy of the district around what's most important. Um, and so I, I need to thank you for that, Mike, I appreciate it. So moving on to eight C, facilities updates. Um, I'll start with, you know, C two and three. We've submitted statements of interest, um, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to get support, um, to repair and hopefully replace, um, the Greenwood roof or the Walton roof. It won't be both, it'll be one or the other. And so they asked us to prioritize and we've, we've done that, um, but it won't be support for both. We hope that it will be support for one. Um, but us being selected for that accelerated repair grant is based on, same as the core program, it's based on the number of applicants they have and the needs of other schools in comparison to our need. Um, and so, and one of the things that I find myself talking about virtually every week or a number, any number of days every week is the high school. And so, um, we are going through our last, our FY, our last year's statement of interest and we're going kind of line by line and we are making edits and we're updating information. Um, and we have not yet heard back from me asked in regard to our accreditation, but when we hear back, that will be part of our MSBA submission for the high school, not for the accelerated repair program, but for, to get funds to either renovate or rebuild our high high school. So, which is been a, a big part of, of what we've been working on over break and over the last number of weeks. So that's it.
Did it end April?
April 15th. I think it might be, it might, let me check the date because I think it falls on a, I think the 15th might have...
That's what you said.
Yeah, so it's the 12th. I think it's April the 12th. So February 15th is accelerated repair, April the 12th. And we should be done our SLI at least two weeks ahead of that deadline.
Okay.
You're welcome, thank you. That's it.
Very good. Thank you very much. So just on that, on that topic, following that timeline and we are going to be, it is going to be on our, on our next agenda on the 12th, a conversation around some, some action that we'd be thinking of taking within the community and engaging the community at whole with regard to the high school project. Because also on the 26th, in meeting that, the schedule, we will need to vote on, no, no later than March 26, we will need to vote to approve the submission of those SOIs. So on the 12th, we'll have a conversation, which is our next meeting, around high school project and 26th will be voting to approve those SOIs. Very good. Item, budget item, excuse me, agenda item nine, do anything on tonight for budget? There's a couple of gifts we've been generous enough to, are grateful enough to receive. We have a motion, Ms. County.
The school committee accepted gratitude donation of $1,000 from the Wakefield Cooperative Bank for the parent university program. This is the second $1,000 gift to the parent university from the cooperative bank for this year.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes your hands.
What is the date of parent university?
It's March 60, or 23rd? 23rd.
March 23rd, okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on, Subcommittee reports. Finance and Facilities, I know we've heard a lot about finance tonight, but you're always welcome to update us.
Yeah, thanks. Not much to add, just that, you know, we appreciate, again, all the work that the administration has done in concert with the faculty and the staff to give us all the information we need. And as Doug said, we had a good meeting yesterday in which Doug laid out in broad terms what we heard tonight and had the opportunity to have a little feedback also from our Finance Committee liaisons. And so we'll meet again in March and, and have one more conversation with the Finance Committee in hopes that when we bring them a final budget that's been approved by the school committee, that they'll take that to town meeting with a favorable recommendation.
Very good, thank you, thank you Greg. Any questions for finance? All right, very good. Item B, labor relations. We continue to, to meet, we're, we're meeting. We've got a very hefty schedule now set up for negotiations with all bargaining groups. We've begun with the teachers and we've got other dates set up with all the groups for a fairly aggressive March and April. So we're scheduled for meetings through the end of April at this, at this point. So to be continued, of course, but, but those, those negotiations are, are beginning in earnest. Policy and communications, Ms. County.
Nothing to report.
Okay, student services. We know that our student services chair is still on the mend. We wish her nothing but the best, of course, in her, in her recovery, but would either Chris or Amy like to?
We decided to just kind of let it sit a little bit. Doug was trying to get this budget finished and if there were more inquiries from the, from the survey you wanted to talk about, we were ready to meet, otherwise we were waiting for Amy to come back.
Okay, great. Okay, item 11, future dates and agenda items. As I mentioned earlier, next, our next meeting, which is not next Tuesday, I apologize, our next meeting, Tuesday, March 12, will be a regularly scheduled school committee meeting plus the FY '20 public budget hearing. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. Please note, that's a, that's a half hour earlier than usual. The purpose for that is to be able to conduct the public hearing at a, so we're not, if we're, the public hearing can go as long as the community wants, but we want to make sure there's enough time and it's not dragging into the, into late nights. So we're going to add a half hour at the beginning of the meeting to hopefully accommodate a, a, a good interest among community members. And also just as I mentioned in conjunction with Doug's report that, and to say it out loud, that the, the school committee will vote, will, will deliberate and take action up to including a vote on the FY '20 budget on Tuesday, March 26, a month from tonight. And that will be a regularly scheduled time at 7:30. Okay, are there any other future agenda items for discussion? Anyone like to put something on the agenda? Okay. Item number 12, school committee comments, going around the table. Can we start with Amy?
Nothing really, just I hope that they're doing well right now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, one is the time of the clock, that's right. Okay, Greg?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Chris?
Two pieces of information I would like, I don't know how hard they would be to get. When we're looking at, on the budget book, could you look at any of the lines in the percent? I've been seeing this percentage of the total budget of that line.
What page are you referring to?
Thirty-seven.
That's one page.
Yeah. Yeah, so that is, the percentage increases the percent, sorry, that is the, that percentage represents the increase in the budget.
The total budget.
Total budget.
Yes.
Would I be able to know what the percentage change of that individual line was? Sure, something I can put together. Just trying to think, yeah, I mean, and then, it's not one line, it's a group of lines, but yes, I'm certain.
That one category, hell, it'd be less.
And then on, throughout the book, we have individuals centers of like, with history, you know, 17, 18, 19, 20, but I don't have a total budget of that information. I'd like a summary of what, compile all those individual centers into one page that says, you know, professional salaries in total have changed this much over time.
In addition, in addition to page 59, which breaks it up by DESI cost center, just by the, by the fourth decimal, decimal, 1,000 level, 2,000 level, 3,000 level. So it doesn't break it up by salaries, but it would be all instructional is 2,000, all administrative is 1,000, all student services is 3,000, all...
Required reporting in that form.
But yeah, I mean, I, I certainly, I think what makes this actually easier to do is once it's uploaded into MUNIS and run reports and slice and dice. Doesn't mean that I can't do it in Excel because it's in MUNIS, I'm actually going to take it into Excel anyways.
And I'm not asking you to spend hours doing something.
It may not take hours, but...
But if it was a couple of clicks of emails, it would be helpful.
I can probably provide that.
Okay, thank you.
So could I ask clarity for my own sake? So you're looking for a summary, final budget for 17, 18, 17, 18?
I'm like, we've got a page with Doyle, we've got a page with Dolbear, I'd just like to compile them to one page.
I think what Chris was looking for is if you look at our monthly reports, it's his professional salaries, instructional aid salaries, custodial salaries, and it's not broken up by location, it's for the entire district. So I think I can probably look something with that.
Maybe they're providing the final budget document of each year from, from those reports.
Yeah, the, the MUNIS codes, the object and org, organ logic codes are in the budget book, they're just hidden columns. So if I can hide them, I can sort and slice and dice by that and give Chris or the entire committee the snapshot, like it looks like in the monthly reports.
Otherwise, it's like 20 pages instead of a, a summary.
I can, I can certainly provide that, so.
If you could provide that to the whole committee, I mean, I think that's an extra question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Colleen, any, any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Doug or Mike, any, any comments?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm good as well. Do you have a motion to adjourn, Ms. County?
Adjourn at meeting of February 26, 2019.
So we're second. Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Pass your hands. Good night, thank you all.